Is there any additional public comment before we introduce our speakers?
I have no additional comments.
Okay, thank you. So we are fortunate that this is our second month where we get to hear people in the library speak about what they do and what's going on with their positions. So today we have Bridgette Russ, who's the circulation manager, and your, the lower part of your face is cut off on my screen. I don't know if that's accurate for, okay. And then we have Paul Mansour, who's the assistant circulation manager. And we are going to just let you take it away and tell us about what you do and what's new with the library.
Okay, well, Paul and I thought we'd give you an overview of what circulation staff do on a daily basis. And then also share some of the modifications that we've made to maintain a healthy environment for the patrons and staff during the pandemic. So we thought we'd start with the greeter. The greeter gives up the patron their first impression as they walk in through the lobby and a first look at the services that we offer. They also handle incoming phone calls. They monitor staff compliance. We also have masks available, an adult and children's sizes, for patrons who may forget to bring their masks when they come in. And the greeter is also responsible for keeping track of the number of patrons entering and exiting the building. As you probably all know, in the lobby, we have a copy machine, the fax machine, courtesy phone, the women's committee book sale, as well as information on the pottery museum, library programs. And we also have that knowledgeable staff member to offer assistance for patrons that need help with any of those services, that equipment. Ohio residents can register for a library card in person or online. We only ask that they, for an ID and two verifications of the patron's address. We also have incomplete cards for those patrons who cannot supply an ID at the time or address verification at the time of registration. All items are returned in our sort room for five days before returning to circulation. After the quarantine period, we process the returns, including the shipment from the Cleveland Consortium. To accommodate the quarantine period, all items are checked in find free. We also have the automatic renewal available to assist patrons. No more having to call CIRC to renew the items. The day before the item is due, the system attempts to renew the items and patrons are notified only if their items cannot be renewed. And they can be renewed up to five times. Staff at circulation help maintain the collection by setting aside damaged materials. Items with broken cases or worn covers are sent down to the tech services for repair. We also have been regularly sanitizing all high-touch surfaces in the public area, as well as at the staff workstations. Payments can remain contact-free. They can be made at the self-check kiosk. We're online now. Let's see, sorry. Circulation processes items pulled by the Cleveland, the children's department for teacher loans and returning building loans. During the pandemic, we've also been a pickup point for the craft program supplies. We have, we assist support groups by handling trivia night question, tickets, membership drives, and selling tote bags. And we also have worked with the Rocky River Assistance Program for the last few years, spearheading a yearly food drive. We've assisted adult reference during the pandemic with weeding collections, processing discards, relabeling collections, and processing new cases for the DVDs. While circulation staff offers human interaction to patrons as they come to the desk, our duties go beyond the efforts at the desk. Staff are trained passport agents who guide patrons through the application process, taking photos, and verifying the applications are filled out properly, as well as Paul and I are both notaries, so we also assist patrons with notary needs. We do have two new services I'd like to talk about, and that would, one would be the at-home COVID test kits. The patrons simply have to download the Navica app, pick up a kit and instruction sheet at the drive-up window, follow the step-by-step instructions, and they can have the results in 15 minutes. And something else is we're currently testing email receipts. So patrons will soon have the option to receive their email, an email with their return dates instead of the long printout that they can get at the desk. Paul?
And I coordinate our shelving staff. There are 11 shelf staff. Four of them are student shelveurs. Of course, the job number one for the shelves is to return items back to the shelves. But there are also some behind-the-scenes things that shelveurs handle. They're also important. All the shipments that come in from our other Cleveland locations are unpacked by the shelveurs, and they also pack all outgoing shipments to 46 libraries in the consortium. Purilation then processes the items that have come in, where it's our own items that are being returned or items from other libraries that have been requested by our own patrons. And others also are key to pulling all the items. We list Monday to Saturday of all of Rocky River. Both our patrons and patrons at other locations. Our shelving staff locates all of the items in our building that have been requested, brings them to CIRC to be processed, to go out to wherever they are headed. In addition, shelveurs also have a task of shelf reading, which keeps the items in our collection in order so that items are easily retrievable by both librarians and our patrons. Shelveurs also help out at the greeter desk when, when needed, and that's the shelving story.
Well, I, that's, thank you for walking us through the different processes that you oversee. And it's really exciting to hear how, how well you've adapted, I would say, to COVID. I know you have these added responsibilities, but it sounds like you've got it, it's probably secondhand by now, I'm guessing.
Close to it.
Yes. The, the test kits, that's just really, just a fascinating and amazing offering that the library has. It's really exciting. I, I look forward to hearing some kind of metric about how much it's used. I know it needs to be publicized so people know about it, but that's really, really great.
It has been well received so far. In the first week, we gave out 29 kits. So, yeah.
Any other questions from board members for Paul and Bridgette, or comments?
I have one thing. It's Cindy. I'm sorry. Did you say that we have, or are we going to be starting up passport services again?
I, I'm waiting, we are, I'm waiting to hear from administration as to exactly when we should start them. I know Trent and I have talked about it throughout, so I think soon. Correct, Trent?
The plan is, once we get down underneath of high instances, we'll start returning some of the services. So that would take us, our company would be under 100 per 100,000 cases for the week. We would start adding back passport be one of them at that time, and then expand it maybe once we get to level two of the, not counting, but the state's health, public health service.
Right, okay, good, thank you. Have you had any patrons ask about when they'll be coming back? Passport services will be coming back in the meantime?
We, we have gotten calls periodically. I would say maybe one, at least one a week, wouldn't you say, Paul?
That sounds about right. Somebody asked for an application just today, so that people are still interested.
Good. Thank you.
That's good to know, because we're going to be on that list shortly. So, good. Jenny?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to say thank you to circulation, because I know that this was a crazy time, and I know that your staff came out to my car at least, I don't know, 100 times in the past year. So I just really, really appreciate what you guys have done, and I know you have heard that from a lot of places, but I just want to offer it here, too. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dan, I think you had something you wanted to say.
Well, I just wanted to ask a question. It's probably the wrong time to ask because of COVID, but with the increase in digital subscriptions and checkouts and things, are you noticing any kind of a impact on your workload? Is it the same, or going up, or going down?
I think it's about the same. Yep. Paul, do you agree?
There, there seems to be a good volume of items passing through the desk.
Yeah. I know we're, I mean, with all the check-ins in the morning, and then again, the shipment comes in the afternoon. So they're pretty busy all day, and we're still getting a good amount of patrons in and out of the building as well. So I would say it's about the same. Some days seem like more.
Great. Well, I want to invite you to stay, Paul and Bridgette. This is a public meeting. You're welcome to stay. But I also understand that you may not choose to spend your spare time in a Zoom meeting, so you're welcome to go as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So the first motion that we have actually is not on the agenda, because we are going to have a motion to amend the agenda. So we are going to remove an item from the agenda, which is the sign of contract approval. And then we're going to add at the end that we're going to enter into executive session to discuss legal matters pertaining to the sign agreement. And we will not be coming back into the meeting since we won't be voting on anything after that. So I'm going to ask if I can have a motion to amend the agenda, to remove the approval of the sign, and add an executive session at the end of the agenda to discuss legal matters pertaining to the sign agreement. I'm looking for a motion.
This is Jill, so moved.
Thank you, Jill.
This is Jenny, I'll second.
Thank you, thank you, Jenny. Is there any additional discussion on that?
Do we need to take a vote as the agenda?
Absolutely. That's the next thing. So it looks like we can do the roll call vote on that, please.
Seems like something you could just change yourself.
Well, because the agenda is public, and it hasn't yet been amended, we have to amend it in this way. But we are ready for the roll call vote whenever you are, Trent.
Okay. Ms. Benarski's absent, I believe. So Ms. Fisher?
I guess.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Mr. Stenson is also absent, I believe. Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Trent. That motion passes. Thank you. Next, we are moving on to the approval of the minutes for February. I'm not sure if there were any corrections given to Jamie beforehand, or if anyone has any corrections here at the meeting. If there are none, may I have a motion to approve the February meeting minutes as they stand?
This is Cindy. I'll move.
Thank you. And I will second that. Melissa? Any additional discussion? If not, we're ready for the roll call vote, Trent. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms., Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Trent. That passes. Okay. I'm looking at two different agendas. I have my sort of guide, and I have the one on the screen, so I keep looking backward and forward here. So we're moving on to the business of the board, or the fiscal officer and finance committee report. Jill, do you have anything you want to say before Will?
No, I'll just kind of give you an overarching. It was a quick meeting. We met last Monday. And one of the items we talked about regarding the sign, I know we'll talk about later. But also, Will's got some great news. I think his summary does a really good job of where we are. And want to preface, too, as we look at finances, keep in mind, we are approaching, next month will be one year of the pandemic. And what, as we look at those financials, so it's been really interesting as I look back, I was looking back a year, where were we? It's just amazing job by everyone on managing this and continually having to adjust projections. So Will, Jamie, Trent, everyone on trying to, on managing that, they've done a great job. So Will's got some news for us on that one, too, on where we are.
Sure. Thanks, thanks, Jill. Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, my summary lays it out pretty clearly, but you're performing much better than, than anticipated. We're doing better than all the, the predictions of the state of Ohio, which is great news. There, there may be a little hiccup here in, in March or April. We'll, we'll kind of see how that goes. As we've discussed before, a big chunk of the state's revenue comes in on April 15th. And as many of you may or may not know, that date has been pushed back to May 17th. The IRS, state of Ohio follows that as well. For some free tax advice, the cities are following that, too. So if you haven't filed your return, you can wait for the cities as well. So that may have like a little impact on the state revenue. But again, everything, the state's performing much better than anybody would have thought at this time last year. So next month will be a big month to kind of just show one year from, you know, shutdowns and kind of the doom and gloom that we all felt when this first happened, and kind of get a good feel for how well we've actually done during this period of time. Now, that doesn't mean we're out of the woods. You know, if we look further into the future, there is potential for the PLF to still be significantly impacted by this. I think we budgeted really conservatively for that. I think we're going to perform better than budgeted, but we'll see. And then the long-term effects of, you know, the economy has still done really well, all things considered, with unemployment being where it's at. So how will that impact long-term real estate tax collections? I don't know. But, you know, so like I said, we're not out of the woods, but I think we're doing better than, than, than anybody would have thought at this time last year. Something important to point out is that forecast, that's sort of a living document. I don't want that to be, you know, the end-all, be-all. In fact, it's, it's not at all. It'll change very frequently, and I'll just continue to do that with actual numbers versus where I think we can go. That, again, and this is, I'm sure most of you have a feel for how I am at this point, is very conservative as well. I mean, it's, it's, it really is conservative on the revenue side, being lower than, than probably what actually would come. And, and really conservative on the expenditure side and saying, you know, I'm looking at a 15% year-over-year-over-year increase for health insurance, which is always possible, but we've done much better than that. And then, you know, a 3% year-over-year increase in salaries, that's not to say we're not going to do that with, with how the administration gives raises to our staff. But it's more of, that's at the level that we're at. I mean, I think, you know, administration does a great job of reorganizing, and when somebody retires, replacing that smarter. So that doesn't mean that that's just going to grow 3% every year either. So there's a lot of different assumptions there that aren't necessarily going to come to fruition. They're more of conservative assumptions to see, you know, if everything were going in that same route, we would have been moving roughly $2 million in the last, those last four years of that into the capital fund, and we'd still end up with 2.3 million in the general fund. And, and we would probably have to have a conversation if that was reality. But I don't think that that's going to be reality. It's sort of a really conservative forecast. And as we get closer and closer to that 2025 year, if there was two years' worth of down years like that, well, then we would have to have a real discussion, I think. So that's, that's why that's a living document. I think it's for the board to understand and plan ahead, because those discussions of levies and things like that don't happen overnight. It's a long-term plan for the board to kind of be aware of if it's necessary. I'm not saying at all that it's necessary. I'm just saying that document will help us make those decisions.
Thank you. Did you want to mention anything about the agreed-upon audit, the change? That was a great news as well.
Yeah, so as long as the, you know, as long as the board is willing to stick with that, we can always continue on with a third cycle of an AUP, which, you know, saves us, you know, $6,000 to $7,000 a year instead of doing a full-blown audit. So that is good news. I am comfortable continuing that with a third cycle, unless there was something that came about that changed that in my, in my eyes, but I don't see any issues now. I think things run really smoothly. I haven't encountered any problems really, and I don't foresee that happening either. So we could continue with another AUP.
Does anyone have, thank you, Will, does anyone have questions or comments for Will or Jill on the financial reports? Dan?
Well, it sounds like since we're pretty conservative, you really don't need to do anything like a stress test, where we would like to look at the budget and say, what happens if the PLF disappears completely, or something like that? You're already so conservative that we don't have to worry.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't see any need to do some sort of major, you know, we're already kind of doing that in the forecast in a way, because interest earnings are so far down. And again, that's where that conservative, conservativeness comes in as well. It's like, I, I see rates going up quicker than I'm putting in this forecast in reality. But in the forecast, we're sticking with those low earnings. I mean, we do have a significant reserve in our general fund that, that has earnings potential, and we're having those discussions as well to make sure that we're, we're going to maximize that. I think the rates will bounce back quicker, and, and Brian from Fifth Third thought the same thing, you know, not necessarily in 2021, but, but towards the end of '21 and into '22 and '23, we'll see a, a bounce back if things continue in the interest rates.
Yeah, I agree with that, too. Do you think we've got enough money in our capital fund?
I do. I think we're, we've stuck smartly to what we did last year. We moved the additional 650, and this year, I think we'll continue on that path. Again, I put 500 in for 2021. That doesn't necessarily mean that's the number. That's a discussion that Jamie and I have when we're budgeting to say, well, what have we actually done on that living document that Jamie has, that list? What have we done and what's left, and what do we need to then move over? And that's where that building survey came in. So I think we're good with it right now. And we even have, we have a good kind of, I don't want to call it a rainy day, but kind of like a disaster fund in terms of the capital fund, I think. You know, if something major were to happen, our capital fund would cover. If we needed a new roof that insurance wasn't covering, or something like that, we could do that. So. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments for Will or Jill? Okay, we do have to approve the financials for February, so may I have a motion to approve the February financials?
I'll move. This is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy. Any additional discussion? If not, could we have the roll call vote, please, Trent?
Ms., Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes. All right. Thank you. That motion passes. We do have a gift report for the month of February. Jamie, did you want to say anything about that?
So this gift is, I think, yearly at this point. I don't know if many of you know Joanne Karate or not. She is the mother of Ruth Beach, actually, who is on the school board. And I believe this is her other daughter's husband who passed several years ago. So this is, I think, the second or third time at least that she has given in memory of him.
That's a very, a very meaningful gift.
And she was also formerly president of the women's committee.
All right. Well, that, I'm glad that we can recognize that, and that there's that opportunity for people to give those gifts in memory of someone. Well, I will move to approve the February gift report. Would anyone second that?
This is Jill. I'll second that.
All right. Any additional discussion? If not, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes. Thank you, Trent. That motion passes. Jamie? You have a lot, a lot, you had a very full director's report. I'm sure you want to touch upon some things.
I did, and most of my director's report is the next couple of motions that we'll discuss. But I did want to, I did want to point out on, in this, you'll notice the donation of $9,000, $9,410 from Lois Misko. Of course, that'll be in next month's gift report, because we're kind of a month behind. It's the way that the, the books work. So that's why you didn't see that in this gift report. Lois is a very long-term, longtime patron. She is extensively used. She's probably attended every single training class. And I think it was last year or the year before, she gave a considerable amount of money as well directly to the training department for, for their needs because of how it has helped her in her life. She is one of the, kind of the, some of the few patrons that I talk to on a regular basis as well. So when she stops in, and, you know, I've talked technology with her and stuff like that in the past, she'll sit and, and just chat about maybe some of the issues that she's had as well. So, you know, she's, everyone, I think, around here pretty much knows Lois, and, and she's definitely a beloved patron. So that was one thing I wanted to point out. And then, one thing that's not in my report, I did want to mention, I don't know if any of you listen to 100.7 WMMS, but on the Alan Cox Show, it's one of their talk shows, it was about, I think it was last week, one of their co-hosts, Mary Santora, she's actually a local comedian. They were, it's interesting how these things go, but she, they were talking about COVID, and they were talking about COVID testing. And one of them brought up, somehow they got on the subject of libraries and, like, the Lorraine Public Library website. And then they talked about libraries in general. So Alan had a quip about one of the experiences he had at one of the Cleveland libraries. And then Mary is actually a River resident, and she mentioned a not-so-pleasant experience, unfortunately, that she had signing up for a card at Rocky River. The entire conversation took five minutes. But at the same time, it was something that we, we don't necessarily want to be heard about. So I, what, the other co-host on that show actually is Beth Frederick's brother, who is one of our librarians. And so, of course, Beth knew what was going on, and she alerted us. So Krista and I sent a care package to Mary. I wrote her a handwritten note and apologized for her experience. And she did receive those gifts, and we did get a shout-out. Her, her, she said, "The class act at Rocky River Public Library heard about my story and sent me this wonderful package." So hopefully, we cleared the air with her. But it is something, it's interesting that you never know how any type of experience, and you never really know who's walking through your doors. So, so that was kind of a little sidetracked that probably took about a day or so for Krista and I last week. You know, tracking it down, trying to figure out where to send the things and stuff, too. So it's just interesting how that works. And of course, you know, we, we let Trent and Bridgette know as well. So they actually recorded the, they livestreamed their talk as well. So some people watch a talk show as well as just listen. Uh, as well as just listens. So um, so we were able to actually send that video on. So it, it'll be a learning experience in the future as well. So I think all's well that ends well at, at this point though.
Well, I think, yeah, you did the best, you did, you rose to the occasion and responded with. Very professional thoughtful kindness.
Yeah. Go ahead, Dan.
Was there a corrective action so that this wouldn't happen to somebody else or was this more her fault than our fault?
Um, no. So again, we use it, we would use it as a learning experience. So um, we're not exactly sure who. The person in CIRC was, for instance, but um, you know, we did make sure that Trent knew, that Bridget knew. Um, what was going on so that any type of um, more, more of a teachable moment. Than any type of um, penalties, I guess. But like I said, you. It, it, the, the lesson here is that you don't really know who you're dealing with. And that word of mouth is one of the most powerful things. And, and I don't think that it's something that any of us are really unfamiliar with. It's something that we really tried to, you know, when I first started here, uh, Cindy would remember. Um, you know, we used to get patron comments almost monthly. That would come in about negative um, experiences there. And we really don't get a lot of those anymore. So. Um, we do what we can to turn it around. But the other aspect of that. Which I mentioned in my letter was, you know, the strategic plan especially, we talk about patron first. And we talk, you know, all of the decisions that we make trying to reduce barriers and put things in place so that the patrons. Um, you know, it, it, it may take us at the library an extra step. But we want to be able to save patrons that extra step. So um, again, that definitely a teaching opportunity.
Right. I don't want to imply that a corrective action needs to be punitive. It could be something as simple as just educating everybody. Or getting the word out to everybody that this happened. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Totally agree, Dan. Just wanted to say, I think that's a really good.
Well, I think you mentioned, you mentioned Jamie, that you spoke to uh, Bridget and Paul and. Right?
Right, yeah.
Take that to their people.
Right.
That's valuable. All right.
So, yeah, so um, the, the, and, and I did a pretty good, uh, extensive write-up, I think, on um, the next couple of things. Um, so we do have the Visual Communications Assistant job description to be approved. Uh, I did, I did um. Uh, talk about that a little bit last month as well as far as um, not including it. But this is something where the graphics department. So right now there's uh, Chanelle, who is the Visual Communications Manager. And Stephanie Oswald, who is our um, I, I believe she's the graphics specialist is her term. Um, and there is quite a bit of work um, coming through that department. Um, Chanelle does not necessarily have as much time to concentrate uh, herself on the web. So this has been something we've been discussing since, uh, I would say about midpoint last year. As far as trying to get somebody in, um, originally our discussion started as part-time as I talk about. Uh, and with that web focus and then um, throughout the pandemic. And all of us getting into uh, the video editing and video creation as well as being able to, you know. Um, just like the, you know, the, the talk show is also live streamed on YouTube. Being able to expand and, you know, currently we're pretty much offering all of our programming on YouTube and video. But I see that once the pandemic um, fades away. Uh, there's still that arena for video. I think that it's something where it probably pushed us into. Video, but I think that's one of those things, again, that's probably not going to go away. And uh, would serve the patrons uh, even in the future, you know. Um, you know, Jenny, you talked about putting your kids to bed and whereas sometimes we have those seven o'clock programs. And so maybe a parent can't get to that program, but they can then have their um, show their children the next day. Or um, you know, still produce that content. And the video editing and creation. Does take quite a bit of time as far as having to go through, you know, all of the video. Maybe editing some things out, putting in the titles and other types of helpful content. So. Um, I don't see that um, adding the additional twenty hours now. I don't, I don't think that once COVID fades away, that um, we would get to a point where we're like, what do we do with this forty hours now? I, I do think that this is probably something that would probably actually be something like. It probably would eat up sixty hours right now and would fade back into forty as we go into the future. So I, I definitely think this is um, something that is, is needed for us.
Thank you for that explanation. Does anyone have any questions about the job description itself? Dan?
Dan? Well, my question is more about the position. So this is an additional position. We're adding. Twenty hours a week to the total personnel roster.
We are adding forty hours.
Forty hours.
The roster. So starting this year, we did not have um, this position or these hours. I did um, budget because again, as I talked about Chanelle and I had started this conversation last year. So I did, in the budget, I did account for twenty hours in the budget. Um, so this would be an additional twenty hours on the budget, but with other contingencies that are already in place. We're, we're not going to go over on the personnel budget.
Well, is there somewhere else in the personnel list that we can reduce forty hours so that we're not? You know, adding to the number of FTEs and what is our total number of FTEs right now?
Um, our total FTEs, um, if, when we add this, it would probably, it'll be around fifty. It'll be fifty-five FTEs. Because this is obviously adding an entire one.
For our listening audience, FTE means what?
Uh, that's full-time equivalent. So basically, um, if, if you have a, if you had one full-time person. And you had two twenty-hour part-time people, you would still have two FTEs. So you, you, you basically take your total number of hours and divide those by forty as far as staffing. Um, and actually, Dan, I would say that uh, we're actually going to be going through a period right now where, where. I, I don't think that we can cut right now and, and typically it's not our practice. You know, we, we don't generally want to lay somebody off, but again, it would be something where if somebody left. Um, so someone that we didn't necessarily think was going to leave, we might then look at what we can do, whether we need those additional. Um, those hours or as we've also done in the past, um, usually if a manager leaves. Um, those tend to be some of the positions where we can fold it into some other positions. Or um, we'll use um, lower paid staff to maybe do some of the duties. Rather than um, uh, put them up at the, like a manager position or something. But with us going to. Uh, being open in the summer on Sundays, uh, we're actually hiring. I think an additional possibly twenty hours in CIRC. Um, and I know there's a couple of other departments where we're actually looking at that frontline staff. Where we're um, adding hours to be able to accommodate that. So I would say right now. Um, I don't think in, as far as the personnel budget, it's something we necessarily could cut from somebody somewhere else.
Okay, yeah. Now, I'll keep my concerns for later at, like the retreat or something.
I, I appreciate it. Jenny, did you have a question?
Okay. So with regards to the Visual Communications Assistant job. May I have a motion to approve of this job description as it is in our packet? I will make that motion. Melissa, do I have a second?
This is Cindy. I'll second.
Okay, do we have any additional discussion at this time? A roll call vote, Trent, please. Thank you.
Okay, Ms Fisher?
Yes.
Mr Glover?
Yes.
Ms James?
Yes.
Ms Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms Stickney?
Yes. All right, that motion passes. Um, thank you, Trent. And I guess we are moving on to the new confidentiality policy.
Yeah, and this, so this policy, uh, again, as I had written, um, Trent did most of the work on, on this. Um, but this actually combines two previous policies, the library records policy. And the confidentiality policies that we had previously. So there's some added language and then we were. Um, Trent was able to combine them into one policy. So in effect, we'll lose one policy off the books. And again, as I mentioned, um, I think that, um, you know, in discussion with Melissa and I had. Each one of you has a policy binder, which we tried to print when you join the board. And um, you know, I realize it's probably tough to keep up with some of this. So I think later this summer. Um, we'll, we'll, we'll call all of those binders in. Um, you can bring them all in and then we'll make sure that um, everything is up to date and current. Any new policies that aren't in there are included and anything that um, is no longer relevant. Uh, which doesn't, you, doesn't happen too often, um, that those are removed.
I think that's a great idea. I know I've tried to keep up a little bit and occasionally I would print something revised, but I know I, I have not been. Comprehensive in that. And so I think that's a, a good idea going forward.
Yeah, and, and the biggest, um, just, just to point out, the, the biggest change and, and kind of the. Um, with this is, as I mentioned, the, the CLEDMET language. So that is something. That uh, we had gotten an email from another library. They had said that uh, their legal team had reviewed their policies. And especially with the video game theft issue that we had, where we actually were releasing information. Um, that um, we let patrons know. That some of their information might also be accessed by other CLEDMET libraries because they are part of. Um, CLEDMET in general. So that was the biggest. Um, kind of trigger to looking at this policy. And um, and then I think Trent did a good job of, of looking at them both and, and, and combining them into one.
I do appreciate the way you gave us the old policies with the red line and then gave us a clean copy of the new policy. That was. Really helpful, Trent. Thank you for that. All right. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Otherwise, may I have a motion to approve the revised confidentiality policy?
I move to the group. This is Jenny. Sorry.
Cindy, would you like to second that?
I will second, and I'm, I, I think I caught one typo. I just caught it a few minutes ago. So Trent, you can fix it and we'll approve this with that fix. It's the very last paragraph, protection of personal information. And on the second line of that, there's a reference to disclosure of person information. So it should be personal information. I just caught it or I would have called you earlier. Thank you.
So close.
I know, I know that several people. Right? I know that several eyes saw this, this, um, so it is very hard to catch every typo.
Yes, it is.
So close though, Trent. You're right. So close. Okay, so any additional discussion before the roll call vote? Okay, we're ready, Trent.
Uh, Ms Fisher?
Yes.
Mr Glover?
Yes.
Ms James?
Yes.
Ms Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms Stickney?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. And again, thank you, Trent, for your hard work on that. Um, we do have a personnel report. I believe it is. No news is good news, right? Okay, so may I have a motion to approve the February personnel report?
This is Jill. I'll move.
Thank you, Jill. I'll second that. This is Melissa. Any additional discussion? Barring that, a roll call vote, please.
Ms Fisher?
Yes.
Mr Glover?
Yes.
Ms James?
Yes.
Ms Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms Stickney?
Yes. Thank you. That motion passes.
And we will, um, we will have a, a personnel report next month and it will probably be longer one than we've seen in the past. Because um, we, Trent and Sheri and um. Charlotte and Dory, um, respectively in their departments have been interviewing for those supervisor positions that you approved. And then um, so we definitely, and then um, Sheri and Greg and I will be interviewing. For the Building Services Assistant Two position next week. So we should have three things next month and um, probably a couple the, the month after that as well. So just kind of an update.
Yeah, that's good to know. And I appreciate you kind of telling us, forecasting for us what's going to happen next month. That is helpful. Um, I don't have much for the president's report. I have, um, as you all know. I did send out an email asking, generally speaking, for topics for the retreat and I've heard from um, a, a couple of you. Um, a few of you actually, and um, I, I know one that's come up recently is. Um, just to review board ethics. And so I think that, that's a timely topic. Um, I know also uh, looking at the total employee compensation package is some, something some of you have expressed interest in. Um, we will be reviewing the board bylaws. And I do have a question for you about that, Jamie, just based on something you mentioned. Is that something that we need to? Obviously need to review on our own, but is that something that you feel that we should ask our attorneys to look at as well? Before, before we get there?
Uh, as far as the board bylaws?
Mm-hmm.
Um, we can. Um, I don't know that, um, I, it's been five years. I don't remember the last, I think the last time the board did it on their own, we might have passed it through Jim Wilkins. Um, or we might have found um, somebody else locally to do that. Do you remember, Cindy?
I, I think it's Wilkins. I, I have a vague recollection that he has looked at the bylaws for us before. I mean, in total, yeah.
I just, I wanted to, thank you, Cindy. I wanted to ask that so that we could anticipate that coming up and, and make sure that. That he had those in, in a timely way before we met. Okay. And um, and I think then you mentioned Jamie, the binder update in conjunction with that retreat or around that retreat is, is kind of a good way to. Bring together that um, refresh that we need.
Yeah, and, and I'll, I'll, yeah, we'll email that out, but we might as well wait until, until if and when the, the bylaws change. Cause then we would just include that as well. So that'll be the, that, we'll wait until the results of the bylaws and then. Um, after that, we'll, we'll call those in.
Okay, that's good thinking. I did want to just give an option, an opportunity for anyone to make comments. On the other reports that were submitted in our packet. Um, I know. We really appreciate those reports and um, the one that I was particularly intrigued with. And probably will have to give to my book group or consider, you know, telling them to look at. It was the statistical measure of a month. That, you know, the top reads in Rocky River. That was really fascinating. I really liked that one. Um, but again, I, I do read through all of those um, reports and. I'm always very impressed with how thorough they are and I always learn something about the library I did not know before. So. Okay, and yes, Jenny?
Hi, um, so I have noticed a lot, there's a lot in the um, the. Uh, the reports that I'm really impressed by. But I also was wondering if maybe Jamie, if you could include in your director's report. If there's anything on the diversity inclusion front. Um, each month. So I, I noted, I like, I flagged a bunch of things in the departmental reports. Um, that I was really impressed by, but I think that our community at large is super interested in this. And I know that we had talked about. Um, the, some of the. Um, the reading groups that we have been doing and some of that. And then we had also had a conversation about the. Um, storytime initiatives that were going to happen. And I was just wondering if maybe we could make that something that we talk about every month, um, if possible. Just so that it's on the forefront for what's happening in our community. Cause I see it in these departmental reports and I'm really impressed by it. And I think I would love to just have it as a highlight each month, if that would be possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's certainly in keeping with our strategic plan.
Yep. It's a great idea.
It really is. Yeah, I, I echo fantastic detail. I mean, it's really helpful. I. Like support services that they, they went to a librarian's guide to homelessness training. I mean, just some of the, the depth of the training that's going on. I had no idea and it's so, it's so fantastic to know, you know, what everyone. And it's so, it's so fantastic to know, you know, what everyone is being involved in, just the level that our library goes to. Really amazing, really amazing. So just, I'm with you guys, the detail has been so helpful. And I know it takes a lot of time, but please relay to everyone how much we appreciate it.
Yeah, so specifically that training, the Ryan Dowd training, and the title is somewhat misleading because he doesn't talk only about homelessness. But he, that's something where, you know, I don't think a month goes by and Trent and Sheri and I will say, like that Ryan Dowd training or another staff member will reference that training specifically. So that's one that's kind of gotten passed through and it's, it's starting to, you know, somebody, even a staff member will say, you should go to the, you know, that Ryan Dowd training. Like they'll tell another staff person about that. So it's definitely, definitely very good. And a lot of that is Sheri. Sheri is very keen on the trainings and will pass along the information or pass along who she thinks might, you know, who might benefit from some of that. I'll, if I get certain emails, I'll send it to, either to Sheri to pass on to other people or I'll send it to the whole staff. So, yeah.
All right.
I'd like to second the statistical measure of the month praise. Thanks a lot, Peter. That's always great to see.
All right. Moving on to committee reports, buildings and grounds.
This is Cindy. We will have a meeting first half of April. Dan, thanks for getting back to us with your availability and Dave did as well, too. So Krista will be getting out a meeting maker, I'm sure, here in the near future about that. So we will take that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Cindy. Okay, personnel. Jenny?
Hi, we are definitely looking, looking to have some meetings this month and I'll be touching base about availability.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to new business and we do have some new business that you received. It was not in the packet, but it was in the email that followed that with regards to the two Cowan donations. Did you want to talk about that before we move to accept those at all, Jamie?
Well, I, make sure I'm on, I'm not muted. So I think that Greg, Greg Hatch provided kind of the summary of why he wanted those. You know, the one comment I got from somebody was, especially in which I thought of too, those Monk bookends, they're not the, you know, the prettiest Cowan pieces. Art is obviously in the eye of the beholder, but it is, one of the things that Greg is excited about is showing the, it helps show the evolution of Cowan because those are very early Cowan pieces. It also shows some of the earlier glazes that they had as far as the Monks. I think the lamp is something that is rare, so that's a rare piece. And then the, the third donation, which I didn't have a picture for you, we actually, once Greg sent me a picture later, that's another set of bookends. We actually have that set of bookends already in the collection. They are on display. And the benefit to the museum for a second set of those is that Greg can use those as a teaching pair. So items can stay in the collection, they can stay on display, but he's trying to work on kind of a to-go pack type of thing to where if he wanted to go out and teach or do a presentation, some of those things can be in that pack and he can take them with them and, and show those pieces off. So that would be the benefit of that, the second bookend.
I, I think those gifts, I liked his explanation and I thought he, he thought this through very clearly. And so I would certainly like to make the motion to accept the two donations from the Cowan Pottery Museum Associates, if I could have a second.
Is it two or three?
We're going to do them separately since they were donated by different, so this one is two items from the Cowan Pottery Museum Associates.
This is Jill, I'll second it.
All right, any additional discussion? If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes. Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Trent. And may I have a motion to accept the donation from Roger Stanbridge? And that is the rare lamp that you saw the picture of.
No, Rogers is a book, a bookend.
Oh, Rogers is the bookends.
They're not yet, yeah, you didn't have the picture of those.
Okay, that's fine.
I think, I think he said it was five, five-piece number, or five-five-two.
Thank you for the correction. Okay. So may I have a motion to accept the donation from Roger Stanbridge?
This is Jill, I'll make a motion to accept those.
I can second, this is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Any additional discussion? If not, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes. That motion passes. And, you know, again, we are very grateful, both to the association and to Roger for their contributions. And I'm sure you, you or Greg has expressed that gratitude in some form.
Yes. And we'll, we'll have to make sure that those are officially on the gift report next month as well. So.